Pleased to have you all here tonight. I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters volunteers who are helping tonight, especially including Amanda Crombie, who worked really hard organizing this event. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and thank you to the candidates running for office for coming tonight to respond to questions. We've got four candidates for the District Two primary race and four for the at-large seat. I also want to thank the City of Bloomington for allowing us to have the forum here tonight, and I want to thank Bloomington Cable for filming this forum. This forum will be rebroadcast on cable, and it will also be on YouTube with a link to the city website and to the Legal Women Voters Bloomington website. The Legal Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The Legal Women Voters never endorses any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the Legal Women Voters. It's our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues face-to-face that are important to you and to get your questions answered. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues or all of the questions in the limited time that we have, but if your questions are not addressed, ask the candidates directly after the forum. We have volunteers who will hand out blank cards. I think most of you already have cards. If you want any, just raise your hands. And Amanda and I will be handing out additional cards. And when you write, and you're welcome to write any questions you have for the candidates on the cards. And then just raise the card in the air, and either Amanda or I will pick the card up for you, and they'll go to the card sorters, who will get, who sort the cards and try to get all the issues that are raised to the candidates. We ask, and we have asked, that no campaign buttons, signs, or literature be worn or distributed until after the forum, and you'll notice that there's no candidate literature out, and that's because we've asked that it not be out. If you wish to photograph or record this event, you're welcome to do that, but please don't interfere with the audience or the proceedings in any way. Now I'd like to introduce Debbie McNeil, who's an experienced moderator from the Legal Women Voters in Edina. And at this time, I'll turn this matter over to her. Debbie?
Thank you very much, Mary. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's candidate forum. Before we get started, let's all get out our cellphones and turn them off, or at least put them on silent.
Good morning.
Thank you for doing that. The purpose of tonight's forum is to hear the Bloomington City Council candidates for District Two and the candidates at large discuss issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have, and the views expressed in the forum will be those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. The fact that the League sponsors this forum does not imply the support of any candidate. All the candidates who filed for office were invited to this forum. Now I'd like to tell everyone the rules and the format for the forum tonight. The speaking order was set before the forum at random, and it will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make an opening statement, and each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. We will generally alternate the questions between the District Two candidates and the at-large candidates, and each candidate will have one minute to answer a question that's asked of their group. As Mary has said, League volunteers will time the candidates' responses and hold up signs to show the candidates when they have 30 seconds left, when they have 15 seconds left, and when they must stop. And candidates, I would ask you to observe the time limits. I know that you will. The forum is also going to have one or more lightning rounds where the candidates will be asked to answer a question very briefly, either in one sentence or even with just a yes or no reply, and all the candidates will have a chance to answer the lightning round questions. As Mary has said, you're invited to write questions on the note cards and hand your question to the League volunteers. So as the moderator, I will ask all the questions, and the Legal Women Voters Bloomington will determine which questions will be asked in the limited time, because we will not be able to ask them all, and the League will attempt, in good faith, to cover the topics of interest that are indicated by the questions you submit. All the written questions will become the property of Legal Women Voters Bloomington, and we won't allow any campaign materials or signs or brochures or candidate buttons in the room, as Mary has said. The forum is being video recorded, so I would ask you to hold your applause until the end of the forum, and I'd ask the candidates to speak right into the microphone, and so your responses can be heard on the video, and to direct your answers to the audience. Now I'd like to introduce you to the candidates for City Council who are appearing tonight. The District Two candidates are Eldon Spencer, Lenny Clavenschmitz, Shawn Nelson, and Cheryl Lewis. And the at-large candidates are Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, Kim Blasalovich, Nathan Coulter, and Michael Arulfo. Now we'll start with opening statements by the candidates, and these will sort of be mixed up, so that we don't just boringly go along the road here. So we're going to start with the opening statements by the at-large candidates, and I will call first on Nathan Coulter for your opening statement for one and a half minutes.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you to my fellow candidates for being here as well. I'm Nathan Coulter, and I'm running to serve my hometown. By way of my own background, I've lived in Bloomington my whole life. I'm a proud product of the public schools here. I work for and with our Bloomington legislators up in St. Paul, and I also serve on the boards for the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. I'm running because I think we can do better than status quo leadership. It's not that Bloomington isn't well-run, but I just don't see the priorities there that are really focused on moving us forward and really making progress for the folks who live here now and the folks who are going to live here as we look five, 10, 20 years down the line. For me, those priorities are affordable housing, our transportation and infrastructure systems, and a more open and accessible government. I am really looking forward to having this conversation tonight. I'm always happy to have conversations, so if there's something we don't talk about tonight that you want to hear about, just come on up and ask me afterwards. You can also check out my website. It's just neighborsforNathan.com. I would be honored to earn your vote.
Thank you very much. Next, Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, and I'm a native of Bloomington, arriving here straight from the hospital. I was baptized across the street at St. Luke's. I was raised across the street from the city garages on Morgan Avenue, and I took my afternoon naps at my father's business, which is right about where the city garages, or the police station now is. If elected, I will bring to the table age, common sense, economical values, and the ability to listen and hear what people have to say. I care very much about the future of Bloomington, and I'm concerned about the direction that we may be going in. So with the help of the constituents, or my constituents, I hope to shape our future in a financial-prudent way. Our economic, our economy and world economy are facing major changes in the very near future. Retail is losing 9,000 jobs per month. They're calling it the Amazon effect. Amazon shares have grown 33% this year. This will have a permanent impact on how we consume goods. In 10 to 15 years, shopping centers will be obsolete. At that time, we'll be busy trying to figure out how to repurpose a lot of buildings. I see storm clouds on the horizon, and I believe that we need to move forward cautiously with any major spendings that will affect us in the future.
Thank you very much. Next, I would call on Kim Blasalovich. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters of Bloomington for hosting tonight's forum, to you, Debbie McNeil, for moderating, and to all the folks who came out tonight to listen to us talk about important issues. I am Kim Blasalovich, and I'm currently your at-large City Council representative. My family and I moved to Bloomington over five years ago. My background is in economics and finance. My civic participation dates back to my youth. My qualifications that I bring to the table as a City Council representative is experienced leadership, I'm results-driven, and I'm an advocate for the community. I'm actually really excited about what we're working on at the City Council level. Three things that come to mind are our six strategic priorities, I like to call the "strategic six," which are moving us forward, and we just passed them last fall, so I'm very excited. Last, we're taking a deep dive on the budget and looking to improve community communication and community engagement. So that being said, I can't peel back the onion with a minute and a half, so please visit my website, kimforbloomington.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Michael Arulfo, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and it's great to see so much participation from the community and the support for the candidates that are running for City Council. My name is Mike Arulfo, and I believe that the mission of any local government is to provide enriched lives to the residents and to create a sustainable environment for the communities. To achieve these ends, I believe that we need to invest in strong public education systems. We also need to provide affordable housing to the residents, and we also need to protect the green spaces for our children. These are the characteristics of the community that raised me, as a first-generation American from the Philippines. I stand before you here today because of the result of a community with a strong education system and neighborhoods that came together to raise an immigrant like myself and gave me the opportunities that I needed in order to lead a successful life, and I would like to bring these core values here to Bloomington and to make sure that the city moves in this direction. You can gather more information from my website at mikeforbloomington.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now let's go to opening statements by the District Two candidates. Lenny Clavenschmitz, would you like to start?
Yes, please. Thank you, Debbie. Good evening. I'd like to thank you, the League of Women Voters of Bloomington, and everyone for coming out tonight to the candidate forum. My name is Lenny Clavenschmitz, and I'm running for District Two council seat. I grew up in Bloomington. I attended Bloomington schools, and I graduated from John F. Kennedy High School. I went on to obtain a bachelor's degree at the University of Minnesota in Recreation Resource Management. My wife and I have 14 years. Recently moved back to Bloomington with our two young daughters, Abby and Izzy, who both attend Bloomington schools. They're active in lots of our sports associations, which ultimately results in me volunteering within those sports associations, especially Bloomington Girls Hockey and the Bloomington Fast Pitch Association. I'm also a volunteer and a member of the Bloomington Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, and have been chairing that commission for the previous two years. I also was a member of the Community Center and Highland Greens Task Forces in the last several years. Professionally, I've worked in the public sector for nearly 20 years. I've worked in the fields of parks and recreation, public health, and most recently, financial services. If elected, I would work to ensure the City of Bloomington is meeting the needs of our aging population, the families of today, and our children of tomorrow. I also will be an active listener to the citizens of Bloomington and work to ensure the city is fiscally responsible. My goal is to make Bloomington a destination community where people want to work, live, and play. Thank you again for coming out. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out at any time.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Debbie, League, citizens. I've been honored that last winter, the council interviewed 13 very qualified applicants and gave me the opportunity to serve as your district council member, and I hope I haven't let you down. I've made every minute of every meeting since I was appointed on March 20th. I've tried to return every call and every email, and yet with that, and with the six years I had on the Planning Commission, it's still a learning process, and I've really tried to learn every day, and as I get a chance now finally to walk the blocks and meet citizens, I'm trying to learn from you too as to what your needs and ideas are. I've tried to focus my campaign on certain issues I believe strongly on, protecting green space, setting priorities in a careful spending pattern where we deal with infrastructure first and maintaining it before we turn to new financial initiatives. But the one thing that I haven't done is taken any pledges. The only pledge I've taken, the only pledge I will take, as long as I am honored to serve you, is my oath of office, which I wish to take care of, to live up to, because when I put "A Voice for All" on the posters you're going to see soon, I think there's way too many people who get elected and think they're only speaking for their own constituency. I want to represent everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Cheryl Lewis. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. My name is Cheryl Lewis, and I'm running for City Council in District Two. I've lived in Bloomington for 38 years, the last 19 years, or the last 17 years in District Two. During that time, I've served on the Planning Commission for six years. I was on the France and Old Chacape Advisory Committee. I was an at-large member on the Fine Arts Council, and I served as president for several years. Currently, I'm on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and I represent the HRA on the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So the question comes up, why am I running for City Council? And I've given this question a lot of thought. I'm not a lawyer. I don't own my own business, and I don't have a degree in city planning. I'm just an ordinary citizen who thinks Bloomington is a wonderful place to live. We have great schools, beautiful parks, plenty of places to shop, and a strong city government, and that includes the City Council. But even though I believe Bloomington is moving in the right direction, we're a work-in-progress, and we face some pretty intimidating challenges, and I believe that I can help Bloomington tackle those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum tonight. My name is Shawn Nelson. Over the past 18 years, I have lived in Bloomington. My wife, Ann, and our daughters, Stacia and Emma, have made our home here. Bloomington is a great place to raise a family, and it's a great place to grow a business. I'm a small business owner and have been actively engaged in the business community and the housing industry for nearly 20 years to help families achieve the opportunity to own their own home, a home that is safe, efficient, and affordable. When buying a home, families consider the community first, and then they find the right home. I love Bloomington, but I worry about how many friends and neighbors I talk to that go to neighboring communities to shop, dine, and too often now, to live. Are we offering the right amenities, pools, parks, trails, restaurants, and city services? I care passionately about the community in Bloomington. I am running to ensure that the city has the same focus on our core neighborhoods as it has around the areas around the mall and along 494. As our homes, retail centers, strip malls, offices, and warehouses age, it is time to look forward and focus on our neighborhood residents in Bloomington. With focus and passion, we can attract more local restaurants. With focus and passion, we can bring innovative new businesses. With focus and passion, we can provide housing that is affordable to our diverse population. With focus and passion, Bloomington will be at the top of everyone's list of places to live. I believe I will bring that focus and passion.
Thank you very much. Now let's go to questions from the audience, and this first question we'll ask of the District Two candidates, and we're going to alternate generally whether the District Two or at-large candidates answer the question. So this one is for the District Two candidates, and the order we'll go in is Eldon Spencer first, then Shawn Nelson, then Lenny Clavenschmitz, and then Cheryl Lewis. But I'll remind you of that, just so that you're thinking in terms of your order. Here's the question. On the Minnesota River Valley paved trail, should Bloomington require a full plan with construction and maintenance costs from the DNR before approving this project, particularly as it's in a major natural flood plain? What safeguards will be in place to ensure that the DNR has the funding to maintain the trail, and would Bloomington have to step in to maintain it? Now, I know that's several questions, but you have a minute, and you can tackle that however you want.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, I'll give it a shot here. Yeah, I'm not afraid to admit, I am an environmentalist, and initially, the thought of paving over a flood plain in a natural area of which we don't have enough left is a tough deal for me, but at the same time, I'm going to keep an open mind, hoping, however, that we walk before we run. There's certainly some river, or some creek inlets and others that could use raising the crossing level. Perhaps we could even, if we could find the funds for it, create a loop around the Lindell opening down there. And in fact, I'd invite anybody to come down and walk it with me. I'd like to, you know, get as many people's ideas. But I think a demonstration project at first would be best. It's just, the highway department's running out of funds, and we need to be sure that, first of all, it's a wise thing to do with a full environmental study, and secondly, with full fiscal studies. Otherwise, we're not being responsible.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson?
Yeah, when I started to hear about this issue, one of the first things that I did was go down and walk in the park, and I went down to 35W and walked to the west, and it became a one-lane bike trail at that point, and had my dog with me, and we had a good time. And I went over to the Cedar Avenue Bridge and walked across that and walked east. And I also went over onto the other side in Burnsville and walked along the new trail that Excel Energy has opened. And what I was struck by is the diversity of access that that area has, and so when we look at one area, one specific point of it, we come to one conclusion, but I think if you look at the entirety of that valley, there seems to be opportunities for people of all sorts of abilities, from limited mobility to people with more extreme mobility, and I think that's what we're looking for in that area. So yeah, I would want to see exactly how they're going to maintain that in a full plan and how it's going to be funded going forward before we move forward and support that, because I think we want to make sure it's accessible to people.
Thank you. Lenny Clavenschmitz?
Thank you. The Minnesota River Valley Trail, I actually grew up in the Minnesota River Valley bluffs as a young child, growing up over by Cypress Semiconductor, and I feel one of the things we've talked about at the Park Commission level, and hopefully the city will consider when a plan comes forward, is we need to see what it's going to look like. It's hard to make a decision on whether there should or shouldn't be a trail down there until we know where it's going to be, what impact it's going to have, how it fits into the environment, what is the environmental impact to that. Secondly, I agree, it needs to be funded appropriately. The DNR has a hard enough time maintaining all of the other trails throughout the state of Minnesota, and if they're going to build a trail in Bloomington, if it's not well-maintained, people in Bloomington will look to the City of Bloomington to maintain it, and we have to decide if that's an amenity we want to take on or who should be fiscally responsible for that, and that needs to be part of an agreement with the DNR.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis?
All right. There is an advantage to being the last to answer a question, because many of the areas that I would have discussed have been brought up, but I do believe that I would want to see a plan before we went forward with anything, and again, the funding of that, I would want to know that that was going to be in place permanently. That's really important. I think the fact that the funding could go away would be a strain on the city. So indeed, I'd want to see the plan first and then make decisions based on that.
Thank you very much. Now let's go to a question for the at-large candidates. Here's the question, and actually, after I read the question, here's the order that we'll answer it in. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, Michael Arulfo, Nathan Coulter, and Kim Blasalovich. Okay, so here's the question. In light of your discussions with your potential constituents, what gaps are there in the city's services or programs? How do you propose that those gaps be addressed affordably? So everyone has a minute to answer this, and Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, would you like to begin?
I'm quite the garage sailor, and I do get around town, and most of the people that I have talked to are very happy with the city the way it is. They really don't want, we like it just as it is. We don't want it to grow. We don't want it to shrink. We want it to stay the way it is. I forgot the rest of the question.
So it says, what gaps are there in the city's services and programs, and how do you propose that the gaps be addressed affordably?
One gap I see in the city programs would be in sports for, let's say, over 40 sports. I don't think we have quite enough, for instance, I have to go to St. Paul to play softball, so I think we could use some more sports programs for people that are over, you know, 40.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
I think as a whole, the residents of Bloomington are pretty happy with the city's services based upon the results of the last city survey on city services, but what I do see in terms of opportunities would be to provide a program like what Minneapolis provides for small businesses, an incubator program that would encourage the development of small businesses in Bloomington, that would increase the tax base of the city, and a nice offshoot of that would be that it be entirely self-funded by the participants in the program. They would pay in for the services. I see a lot of opportunities for existing businesses within Bloomington to enroll in that program and draw a lot of popularity, as well as provide a needed service to encourage the local community to grow.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
I will, I think, to echo what a lot of folks up here have said, I think folks generally are pretty satisfied with what we have here in our community. I think the things that I've noticed in terms of what we can do better are, you know, in terms of affordable housing, I think there are things we can do both on the policy side and on the investment side to encourage that kind of development. I think there are a lot of resources as well that we have at the city level that folks just need more information about. I would say as well, I've heard a couple of folks talk about community center offerings, you know, what we do with Creekside or whatever comes from that, and then, you know, more locally-owned businesses, locally-owned restaurants. You know, I think one of the things that is attracting a lot of folks to other cities are those kinds of offerings, and I think the more that we can do to encourage locally-owned businesses that folks will want to shout their values at, the better for our city.
Thank you very much. Kim Blasalovich?
Yes, thank you. In talking with constituents around the cities, they haven't raised any real gaps in services that I'm aware of, but I will tell you what we're looking to do as a council, and it's really, although the surveys are great, I really like to have a measure for the services and programs we provide at the city level, how we're funding them, and are we really delivering the value for each dollar? So that, to me, I think, is the exercise that we need to go through as the city and elected officials for the taxpayers, but no real gaps to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the next question we'll ask of all eight of you, and we'll start with the candidates for District Two in this order. Cheryl Lewis, Eldon Spencer, Shawn Nelson, and Lenny Clavenschmitz, and then we'll continue with the at-large candidates after that. Here's the question. Do you think city employees should be required to ask a person for their immigrant status before rendering service? Let's start with Cheryl Lewis.
That is an easy one. That's no. I feel that many of our immigrant citizens and neighbors are already feeling very afraid. They don't think we have their back, and if we allowed city employees to ask about their immigration status, that would make them even more afraid. We have immigrant families that are moving out of Bloomington because they are afraid of what could happen if they stay here. They don't think we want them here, and so I would say no. I don't think that's part of city services. We are not part of that. That's the US government that does that. I'm sorry, right away, the department has slipped my head, but that's not what we do, and so no, it would be completely wrong.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. I have the advantage of following Cheryl and also agreeing with her, it's not an appropriate task for Bloomington public officials delivering the services that we deliver in this city. My wife and I each have two grandparents who were born in another country. My daughter has in-laws who were born in another country. It's made our country great to allow people to come to work hard, to build their businesses, to raise their families, and the last thing we need to do is hassle them.
families. And the last thing we need to do is hassle them when we're, you know, plowing their walks or whatever we might be doing that might occasion the question. I don't need the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson?
No, our diversity is one of our strengths. We should celebrate it.
Lenny Klavenschmitz?
The consensus up here appears to be no. As long as you're, you know, doing what you're supposed to be doing and contributing to the community, paying your taxes, city staff have no reason to question anything of people in the residents of Bloomington. It's their job to provide those services and be a public service. And as Shawn mentioned, our diversity is our strength and we need to embrace that in our community more.
Thank you. Now, we'll ask the at-large candidates the same question, starting, we'll go in this order. Kim Blasalovich, Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, Michael Arulfo, and Nathan Coulter. So, Kim Blasalovich, would you like to start?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heavy subject. Immigration status. I can tell you what the city's done to reach out to those folks. I don't believe in a police state, which would mean going after and arresting those people that were here illegally. But what the city's done to stay in front of it is actually reach out and try and engage to let folks in the community know they don't need to be afraid. We've signed a joint proclamation with the school board for this commitment. And I read that at the Gotabga International Gathering at Jefferson High School. So I think if you're living in this community, we need to provide you a safe path to participate here. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff?
Well, everybody has said it pretty well. So my answer is no too, because it's not our department.
Thank you. Michael Arulfo?
It's obviously a very personal question for me. I immigrated to the States when I was seven years old from the Philippines to escape the poverty of that country. And there's too many stories from my childhood, growing up in the small town that I grew up in in Illinois, to share at this time. But I know how it would have made my family feel and myself feel if going to city services and trying to utilize any one of the city's services, if we were asked for our immigrant status, that's not the kind of message we want to send to the community. I consider Bloomington one of the most diverse and most progressive cities in the country. And, you know, I think that would take, putting in any kind of policy like this would take the city in totally the wrong direction.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, my answer is also no. The reality is, you know, these folks are our neighbors. They're people. They're the folks we interact with every day. And there's a lot of fear out there. And the more that we can do to make sure that folks here feel welcome, that they feel encouraged to participate in our community and know that we know the value that they bring to our community, the better.
Thank you very much. Now, let's go back to questions answered by a panel. And so for this next question, we'll ask the District Two candidates. And the question is, "What do you personally plan to do to keep your constituents informed of what the city council is doing and what positions you are taking?" And for this question, let's go in this order. Shawn Nelson, Lenny Klavenschmitz, Eldon Spencer, Cheryl Lewis. So Shawn Nelson, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'd be pleased to. Yeah, I think this is a big question. I think, you know, when we run into large issues, a lot of people come in and say, "I hadn't heard about this issue before." I heard a lot of people that on the Highland Greens Golf Course say that when they were in the comment period there. And so I think it's really a responsibility of somebody serving on the city council to continually reach out to the community. So while I was serving, if I was fortunate enough to serve, I would continue getting out in the community, knocking on doors, holding events. And I would look at technology, Twitter, Facebook, Facebook Live, schedule a time for people to come in, ask me questions, share conversation, those types of things. I would really, you know, look at scheduling regular events to do that online and in person for people.
Thank you very much. Lenny Klavenschmitz?
I agree with a lot of what Shawn had to say also. But I think one of the other things that I bring to the table is being involved and active in the community already, having those conversations on a daily basis, whether I'm at the softball field or the ice arena or at a school conference, and just talking to the people in the community and being there to answer questions and to be open to getting feedback and suggestions. There's all kinds of great ideas in our community and we need to hear those. And it doesn't all have to be our ideas at the city council level. I think social media can be a very strong platform. The city is starting to do more and more of that. I think as a council member, it's also your role to bring that message to the public and just actively listen and be available to people to sit down and talk, have some coffee, and interact on a regular basis, because we're just all regular people trying to make a difference in our community.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. Recently, we had a major issue come up around the Highland Greens course. And the notice that was given to was everybody whose house was within 500 feet, I guess of some part of the golf course, not nearly enough, a lot more people in that area. We really need to not just look at the minimum required by the law, but the maximum in terms of getting the word out to people who would be in the naturally-affected communities. Similarly, as Lenny's saying, getting out, talking to people is, in the campaign, is the start of a process that has to be continuing. Tying in with the last question, we can especially reach out to our newest citizens. I suggest that everybody who has extra space at the table and who doesn't at Thanksgiving, invite someone who's come new to this country, who doesn't have, who moved from another state and doesn't have somebody whose house to go to at Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis?
I think social media is going to be very important. Facebook website, I currently don't have one, but I will have. But more than that, I feel that interaction with the community is very important. And going door-to-door is great. What I would like to see are town halls. And granted, it would be a district town hall. We're kind of living in a time now that we have town halls and a lot of times your representative doesn't show up. Well, I would be there. So I think that would be very important, having that access on a regular basis. And also, anytime there was a development or a program going through that I knew was going to affect a portion of my district, that I knew that people would be concerned about, I would make a point to reach out on that so that they would know what was happening and could talk to me about it, so that I would be able to understand their feelings as well as what's going on at the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here's another question, and this will be for the at-large candidates. And we'll take it in this order. Michael Arulfo, Nathan Coulter, Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, and Kim Blasalovich. Here's the question. "Do we need more affordable housing in Bloomington? If so, why and how should the city council address this issue?" Let's start with Michael Arulfo, please.
So I believe that Bloomington does need to address the issue of affordable housing. It's a city that is getting older and with an aging infrastructure. And there's just not enough available housing for the folks that are wanting to live in Bloomington. And whether the housing prices, you know, remain at an affordable level or not, the amount of inventory in Bloomington is just not adequate to meet the demand. So I think it's an important issue to address for Bloomington, because in order to grow the community, we need to attract younger families. And in order to do that, Bloomington needs to increase its inventory of affordable housing, so the folks that want to move into Bloomington can afford to live there and that there is adequate space.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, the short answer is yes. Like I said, I serve on the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And the reality is that this is a need that's already going unmet. And it's only going to increase as we look down the line, whether it's older folks who want to stay in the community but maybe don't need three-bedroom, two-bath, or younger folks just looking for a place to settle down. You know, my mom taught at Normandale Community College for 39 years, largest institution in our state college and university system. Wouldn't it be wonderful if more of the folks who went to Normandale could stay in our community and contribute in a much more substantial way? I think there are things that we can do both on the policy side and on the investment side. I've been active with some folks involved with preserving what they call naturally-occurring affordable housing, which we have a lot of in Bloomington. I think there's some innovative ways. We can use community development block grant funds to encourage that kind of development. This is an issue that has to be in the forefront of our minds with everything that we do moving forward.
Thank you very much. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff?
My question is, what exactly is affordable housing? Is it for senior citizens? Is it for Section Eight people? Is it on a sliding scale basis? I think that we need to define exactly what it is and address it at that time, because I just don't know what the definitive answer is right now, tonight, without doing research. And I'm not sure that anybody else knows exactly what that answer is either.
Thank you very much. Kim Blasalovich?
Yes, thank you. I do believe Bloomington has affordable housing. The question is, do we need more affordable housing? And there's a couple of ways of approaching it. Block grant is one. It also means potentially selling property for less. And so taxpayers in the community would have to understand the repercussions for selling property for less and subsidizing, which is fine, but it needs to be understood and articulated to taxpayers in the community. So yes, I do think we have affordable housing and I would be open to considering other avenues to increase it, as long as the community's on board and supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a little change-up and we'll ask you all a lightning, we'll have a lightning round and ask you all a question that you have to answer in just one sentence. Okay?
Yay!
So, I'll tell you, we'll start with the District Two candidates, but everyone will have a chance to answer this question. We'll start with the District Two candidates in this order. Cheryl Lewis, Eldon Spencer, Shawn Nelson, Lenny Klavenschmitz. Here's the question. "The Adina City Council recently raised its tobacco sales age from 18 to 21. If you are voted to be a member of the city council, would you vote to raise tobacco sales to age 21? Why or why not in one sentence, if you can?" Cheryl Lewis?
Yes, I would, because smoking is adding to the cost of our health care. And it's a habit that's hard to break. Many people have had to do it. So I would say that to keep the cigarettes out of the hands of younger kids, younger people, I would vote for 21.
Thank you. Eldon Spencer?
Yes, semi-colon. The studies I think are very clear, and I've looked at a number of them, and unambiguous, that a certain unidentified but measurable proportion of those who are young will not start if we and other cities like us, it seems to be the trend, raise the age to 21. And I'm not going to get many other opportunities in this lifetime to save lives. This is my shot.
Thank you. Shawn Nelson?
Yes, if the research and studies show that it would lower smoking rates, I would be supportive of that.
Thank you. Lenny Klavenschmitz?
Yes, smoking is a tough habit to kick and a bad habit to have, and one that, again, has a negative impact on people's health. And therefore, I would support that.
Thank you. Okay, now the at-large candidates. Kim Blasalovich?
I haven't taken an official position, but I lean towards yes.
Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff?
Studies say that if you don't start by the time you're 21, you probably won't.
Thank you. Michael Arulfo?
Yes, I would support it. It's, you know, it's not a healthy habit and I want to keep it out of the kids' hands.
And Nathan Coulter?
Yes. One of my best friend's dads, who still lives in Bloomington, owns a wholesale candy and tobacco business. So he's probably not going to vote for me. But it's a public health issue. It's a money-saving issue. And it's just common sense.
Thank you very much for being good sports and trying a lightning round. And we'll do one more round, lightning round before the program is over. Now, let's go back though to questions where you have more time, like one minute to answer. And so these questions, this next group of questions is for the District Two candidates. Here's the question. "What are your top priorities for business development in Bloomington? Should raising the minimum wage be one of those priorities?" And here's the order that we'll answer in. Lenny Klavenschmitz, Shawn Nelson, Eldon Spencer, Cheryl Lewis. So, Lenny Klavenschmitz, would you like to tackle that question?
I'd love to. I think one of the top priorities is we need to find ways to have incubator programs for new small businesses to get started in Bloomington. We need to be creative to make leased space available in our retail spaces and in our business districts, so people can get their feet established and get the groundwork in place. As far as raising the minimum wage, I don't feel like it's our place to dictate what people should be paid. I think businesses, given that there's going to be a downturn in workforce in the near future, that's going to create a workforce shortage, employers are going to have to be attractive to employees. And that will take care of itself in creating, if a business wants to thrive and have good employees, you're going to have to pay good wages.
Thank you. Shawn Nelson?
I think the biggest thing we can do to drive business development in our community is focus on it. The last comprehensive plan focused on three areas of our city, Normandale Lakes, Pan American, and the South Loop. And that drove 80% of the development. They brought in new businesses. They bought in new restaurants because of that focus. And I believe we have to have that same level of focus in our older aging neighborhoods and business centers to bring businesses in there. And at this point, I would not support mandatory minimum wage. I think there are a lot of people, including my children, that have jobs that I would like them to get training, learn how to work hard, and get those opportunities to develop. I'm a big supporter of education, retraining and development and things like that, so we can help people move into better-paying, higher-wage jobs coming from the housing industry. We have thousands of jobs going unfilled today that pay very well. And companies that will train you if you're looking for a job.
Thank you. Eldon Spencer?
Yes. On the first of the questions, I'm kind of with Shawn. I think education is extraordinarily important. And fortunately, we have resources, whether it's Normandale College, whether it's the STRIVE program that I've worked with at Jefferson High School through Rotary, whether it's English as a second language programs. And something we haven't even talked about is the importance of forming partnerships with nonprofits as well as the for-profit sector in these areas, so that our many hotel employees, for example, can be promoted from within as they improve their skills, including English language skills. I think the last thing we need to do, you asked if it would be a priority, I would put it toward the very bottom, is to consider separate economic and workplace regulation in areas that already have significant regulatory forces at the state. I think you're creating a myriad of different rules and a myriad of different problems, especially for the small businesses. We need to help especially at the centers that aren't doing as well as others in town.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis?
I'm going to take just a little different tact on this. One of my priorities for the business community is affordable housing. And I know people go, "What does that have to do with business?" In order to have a workforce that can live in our community, we have to have affordable housing for them to live into or live in. It's kind of a trickle-down effect. If you have workers who want to live in your city and work in your city but can't find a place to work, they are not going to be in the city. They'll leave the city to work someplace else. Eventually, you're going to have businesses that are going to be suffering because they don't have enough employees. And we have a very low unemployment rate, so that could happen. So I'm going to say affordable housing is really one of the keys to promoting a stronger business community.
Thank you very much. The next question is for the at-large candidates and we'll answer it and be asked to answer it in this order. Nathan Coulter, Michael Arulfo, Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, and Kim Blasalovich. Here's the question. "What new ideas do you have for encouraging the use of green technologies in Bloomington?" This is a question to be answered in one minute. And Nathan Coulter, would you like to lead off?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, I think there are a lot of innovative ideas that we've seen at the state and local level around the country. I think there are things that we can do in terms of tax rebates and other kinds of things that will encourage businesses to develop those technologies and use them. that will encourage businesses to, to develop those technologies and use them. I, you know, I think the reality is that a lot of these technologies are available now. It's just information that needs to be put out and, and made available to folks and make it economical for businesses to use. But, I mean, the other reality is that this is the future. And I don't think, you know, once we get the information out there, you know, businesses are going to see that their bottom line is going to be helped and they're going to move in that direction.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
So, I think, you know, promoting green technology as a whole is a terrific idea. Both, it's great for the economy because it creates new industry builds, which, you know, increases jobs for folks. And it's also great for the environment, which is always a good thing. I think it's important that we protect the environment. So, I think the city council needs to look at programs that would allow residents to take advantage of these new, new technologies in a form of like what they provide for rehab loans for houses. I think those kinds of programs would provide the necessary impetus and initiative for residents of Bloomington to take advantage of these new technologies, which would help keep Bloomington green, as well as increase some new money into the system as well.
Thank you. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff?
Well, tax incentives and, and just incentives in general to use technology, specifically solar, solar power, would be great. But I would take a low-tech approach to this, too, as mandatory composting, perhaps getting all the restaurants in town to save their food waste and hiring, or not hiring, but paying farmers to come and take it, or, you know, taking it away for nothing and feeding it to their animals. And I think that we should get rid of more non-recyclable packaging, in restaurants especially. I think that we should offer more garden space and, and, you know, that's less gas if you can pick your own vegetables, you don't have to drive the car. But, so, I think that sustainability is sometimes the ability to abstain.
Thank you very much. Kim Vlaselevich?
Yes, thank you. Like, my view of technology and green technology, it's great as long as there's a benefit to it and knowing the timing and implications that it has on the community as we introduce it. So, no back-in-the-pocket vision of what I want to pull out and do, but I was open to implementing better efficiencies and promoting green in the community, being more socially responsible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a question for the District 2 candidates. And we'll take, ask you to answer in this order. Shawn Nelson, Lenny Klavenschmitz, Cheryl Lewis, Eldon Spencer. Here's the question. RFP proposals for the 9.5 acres adjacent to Highlands Green Golf Course are due September 5th. What kind of proposals would be most attractive to you as a city council member? Can we start with Shawn Nelson?
Yeah, I think the proposals that would be attractive to me are the ones that the community supported. I personally believe, when I spoke to the city council, that I think that the one option that they're missing is an option to repurpose that vacant space as green space that could be used and accessible to the community as parks, exercise facilities, community gardens, whatever it is. We should be looking at that option along with the development option. I do come from a development background and believe that there are great developers out there that, that could do this. But I think that it needs to have community support. I've been out in that community, actually went out several nights after the city council hearing just to listen to the community. I think, again, that's important for a council member to do and, and be representative of the people in that area. So, the only thing that I would support is what the community supported, and I really think the city council should look at an opportunity to recreate that as park space.
Thank you. Lenny Klavenschmitz?
Currently, I, I'd like to see no RFP accepted by the city council. I feel that the city council rushed that and did not give some of the other options available enough time. Much like Shawn was saying, I feel like that open space could be used in other ways in our community. We still have a lingering question about a potential community center and a need for space. That might not be the perfect location, but is there a perfect location? Could the community center be a resource, or could the Nine Hole Golf Course be an amenity to a community center versus a standalone facility with a joint clubhouse, front desk, those types of things? I think once open space is gone, it's gone forever and there are some big challenges over there with developing that space. And so, right now, I, I would like to see the city council pump the brake before we, before we lose that space and it's gone.
Thank you. Cheryl Lewis?
My understanding, after I looked into the RFP process for this site, was that the city council won't have to take any of the proposals or won't have to select any of the proposals if they don't feel any are appropriate. So, I'm not necessarily uncomfortable with RFP, RFP's proposals coming forward. I do think, though, that once they do, if there are proposals that the city council will seriously consider, then there are, needs to be, a lot of, there needs to be due diligence and the neighbors need to be involved at every step. Open space would be great, but I also understand that the city tries to increase their tax base. It's hard when you're a citizen. It's really tough when your neighborhood is being affected. So, I think the RFP process needs to go forward, but that the city council needs to be very careful in their decision. And if they choose not to do one, then that would be okay, too.
Thank you. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. First of all, just repeating the comment before, I think the notice to the community was inadequate. I think the dealing with the report of the commission raised so many questions that we should not have sent it forth. That's why I moved to table it. When it wasn't tabled, my amendments that I offered either in the study or at the, that were accepted, would call for any proposal to leave the golf courses open, public, reasonably accessible, and maintaining the practice facilities, including the range. I hate to give up any green space, too. As Lenny said, once it's gone, it's gone forever. When I read through the task force report on the community center, I also read the 250 comments after it, and about 80% of those said, what we really need in town are some turf areas, especially indoor in the winter, because they have to go to other cities for soccer, lacrosse, and a lot of growing sports. So, perhaps we could purpose it that way. The community gardens was also a great suggestion by Shawn and others. So, I think we should really keep our eyes open, and I'm going to view this with a very skeptical eye when it comes back.
Thank you. This question is for the at-large candidates. Here's the question. What are three words that best define you as a candidate? And how do you plan to work as part of a team on the city council? And I wonder if you'd be willing to answer in this order. Michael Arulfo, Nathan Coulter, Kim Vlaselevich, and Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff. So, that turns out to be just right down the row, I guess. So, Michael Arulfo, would you like to begin?
Three words that describe me. I would say innovative, energetic, and engaging. And what I do as part of working as a team, I currently work as a senior product owner for a healthcare company in town, and I work with several teams. And teamwork is something that I value and I, and I'm accountable for in my, in my professional career. And so, I feel like I have a lot of experience in that arena and the right skills to bring to the table. I think one of the keys to working with a team is to build trust and to build relationships within that group, because that's the foundation for everything else that comes with working as a team. If you don't have trust, if you don't have good relationships with your team members, then you're not going to be very successful.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
I would say that three words that define me as a candidate are hardworking, roots, in parentheses, in the community, in the community, and my experience. You know, I, what I bring to the table as far as working in a team is my experience working at different levels of government, working for and with our Bloomington legislators, serving on the HRA Board, and also on the Board for the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. I think how you foster that, that team-working ability is by listening more than talking, by believing that a good idea is a good idea regardless of where it comes from, and working in good faith with anyone who will do the same. I was raised with those values, and those values guide how I live my life and how I do my work.
Thank you. Kim Vlaselevich?
Yes, thank you. Three words that describe me, gets things done. That's what, that best encapsulates me. My professional career, I work with cross-functional teams all over the world to execute on complex initiatives for organizations. As I've come on city council, I've really enjoyed working with other council members. We've got great camaraderie, team-building, and I'm excited about some of the new trajectories with the strategic planning and budget process that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff?
Well, I am very economical. I can take a nickel and stretch it to a dollar. I have a great business sense, thanks to my father. I know I have a good idea of how things can work, and I have a great interest in the future of Bloomington as a lifelong resident.
Thank you very much. Now, let's go to a question for the District 2 candidates. And here's the question. Please describe your vision for Bloomington's transportation infrastructure in the future. Which modes of transportation do you see as most important? And would you be willing to answer in this order? Eldon Spencer, Cheryl Lewis, Lenny Klavenschmitz, and Shawn Nelson. So, we would start with Eldon Spencer.
Well, first of all, I think we have to look frankly at what people use now, as well as what we would like people to use. And the fact is, most people use cars now. So, like, turning back to the last question on the Highland Golf Course, the last thing we need to do is create, make a bigger traffic jam out of what's over a traffic jam. I went to that Normandale 84th Project, and while they found a creative solution, they were talking about spending millions of dollars to turn a F-minus into an F-plus intersection. I mean, the, what we really need to do is be sure we accommodate our citizens as best we can. That being said, buses are a very flexible and convenient method, and as we develop different areas in town differentially, that plus the existing rail line that we have from the Ball of America with a number of stops that our council in the past, I got to say, did a good job in lobbying the Metropolitan Council to get, have been helpful. I think I'm out of time, but I'm a bike rider, but I, we need to respond to people.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis?
I would agree with Eldon. That buses, mass transportation to me is probably the most important thing. I know when I was working downtown, I needed that bus to get into the city and back home, and I didn't want to take a car. So, I think buses, mass transportation is very important. I also think we should increase our bike trails and our bike availability. A lot of cities now are becoming very bike-friendly, and I think we should join that group of cities. Not everybody's going to use that bicycle, but there are a lot of people out there who bike. So, I would say to increase the opportunity to use bikes and more bike lanes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Klavenschmitz?
Much like Cheryl and Eldon had to say, I think commuter, commuting by vehicle is still going to be the primary method in which people get around Bloomington. One of the major issues we have is with our infrastructure. A lot of our major roadways happen to be under, fall under jurisdiction of Hennepin County, and we need to work with them to make sure that they are investing and reinvesting in roads like Normandale Boulevard, Old Chocopee Road, not just milling and overlaying, but actually making improvements to those roads that help get traffic through our community in an efficient way. We also have a really great alternative transportation plan in place in Bloomington that's revised regularly that includes other means to which getting around, like sidewalks and bicycle trails throughout our community. Buses are important. We also will have to deal with, how do we get our aging seniors around town as they lose their ability to be more mobile and independent? So, busing and door-to-door services, but that's more of a community function and less of a city function, in my mind.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson?
Yeah, I agree with most of what is said. Cars are going to be primary. We need to take care of our roads and make sure that those are available. We need to look at efficiency and make sure our transportation systems are efficient, the vehicles are efficient, our buses are efficient. We need to look at utilizing technology. You know, you can use an app now to get a ride different places. Could our bus services, like they're doing in the West Metro, start to utilize services like that, so we have door-to-door pickup connections into the bus system? We have a number of people in our community with special needs that need help getting to different places like jobs. Transportation is absolutely paramount for people to keep a job. If you can't get to that job, you're obviously not going to keep it, so we need to solve that issue for the people in our workforce. We need to look at bringing in more restaurants and local services into our places so we can drive less. We have to go not as far to get to different things if we have those things here, reduce the miles driven for our cars.
Thank you very much. This question is for the at-large candidates, and here's the question. What role should the Met Council have in local government? Does the Met Council have too much power over Bloomington? But, let's answer in this order. Susan Hoffmeister-Woodruff, Kim Vlaselevich, Nathan Coulter, Michael Arulfo. Go ahead, Susan.
Well, I knew this question was coming somehow, but I think they should have zero. I think they need to let us run our own show here. I don't know enough to talk about it, but my answer is no.
Thank you very much. Kim Vlaselevich?
Like any relationship and partnership, we need to have good ones. The Met Council, to date, has worked with the city and has continued. But like I said, anything should be looked at. I'm going to make sure it's still delivering the needs of the city and the best interest of the people here.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, I believe the Met Council, you know, I look of it, I look at it as a real opportunity to continue to work with partners. You know, the reality is, and some of you might be surprised by this, but the Met Council was established by conservative legislature and a conservative Republican. And obviously, that history has not played out the same way. But I think the Met Council brings some innovative funding and resource options that we can take advantage of to make things better in our community. You know, there have been a number of legislative options that have been discussed as far as reforming how the Met Council operates, how members are appointed, and so on. I would leave it to the legislators to debate on that, but certainly I would be free to offer my opinions.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
So, I believe that local governments need to stay local. That's why I'm running for city council. I think this is where we can make the most difference, we can get the most things done without the, a lot of the partisan bickering that's endemic now in all levels of government. But having said that, you know, I think that we need to develop partnerships. I don't believe in shutting down any kind of opportunity where we can take advantage of partnerships that will give us resources that we otherwise wouldn't have access to. So, I would not want to shut down the, an avenue like working with the Met Council.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question is for the District 2 candidates. And here's the question. What steps should the city council take to make more diverse peoples feel safe, welcome, and integrated in Bloomington? Should the police play a role in this process? Let's answer in this order. Lenny Klavenschmitz, Eldon Spencer, Shawn Nelson, Cheryl Lewis. So, Lenny Klavenschmitz, would you like to lead off?
Love to.
Thank you.
Working with our, our diverse population in Bloomington is really important to me. My wife is an English-language teacher and interacts with students from all over the world on a daily basis. I think one of the ways in which we can work out, work with and work, involve our diverse populations in Bloomington is to reach out. We need to be more involved and engaging and put more effort into reaching out to the leaders from those different cultural groups and identify them in our community, work with them, get them involved, so that it starts to build a trust, because it does, it doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen by just saying, hey, we want you at the table. We need to establish some relationships, establish trust, get them involved and have them bring their community and members of their community and population to the table to be more involved in our commissions, in our community advocacy, and ultimately make Bloomington a community for all of us.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Yes, thank you. Also, I'll take the second part first. Of course, the police should be part of the diversification effort, both in terms of the force itself, which I know the chief is making some efforts to it, in terms of the groups that they serve. I feel like a Piker, having only lived in town here and in my district for 29 years, I wasn't born here, but in southern Minnesota, our major immigrant communities were Hispanic-Americans and particularly Mexican-Americans. It wasn't all that popular in high school when a young woman named, who's now named Sister Mara, and I set up a program to try to get the kids we knew and their families to settle there instead of being migratory workers. to settle there instead of being migratory workers. But boy, did it help them in school, too, when we found housing for them, and when we found year-round jobs, or helped them, encouraged them basically to find those. And so, that's the kind of initiative we should make, whether it's inviting someone who maybe doesn't look like the rest of our family to join us at Thanksgiving dinner, or working in programs like Strive, mock interviews, the job fair that we hosted with Rowdy. That's my time's up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Shawn Nelson.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing we can do is reach out to diverse communities to make sure that we put the effort on ourselves. I think the police force absolutely should be a role in that in reaching out to communities. I think we have to look at staffing and making sure that we have people that everyone in the community can identify with when they have services, make sure that we're able to provide them in languages and culturally appropriate ways for people. I think that we absolutely have to make sure that people are feeling welcome, safe, secure in our community.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis.
I think it's important, first, I'll start with the second half as well, with the police. I think it's very important for the police to be involved, because I think when you get that involvement with the immigrant neighbors, they'll lose, they'll lose a lot of that fear that they have. Lot of the fear we all have is fear of the unknown. It would help alleviate some of that fear of the unknown, and I think that would help a lot. They'd be much more open to wanting to work with the police. I think we need to reach out, not only as individuals, but as a community. And I think it's important with the programs that the city does offer, that we make sure that we're reaching out to our immigrant communities so that they know what's available and that they know there are people there to help them. And as I said, on an individual basis, I volunteered for a long time as an English-as-a-second-language tutor, and I found some of my biggest, my best experiences were with people from other cultures.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll have another lightning round, and this will probably be followed by closing remarks, because we're just about out of time. This will be a bigger challenge, because we ask that you answer this question either yes or no. Here's the question, and we'll start, we'll lead off with the at-large candidates and then go to the District Two candidates. Here's the question. If you become a council member, would you support an ordinance that will ban Styrofoam and plastic bag usage by restaurants and stores? Michael Arulfo, would you be willing to tell us yes or no?
Yes.
Nathan Coulter?
Yes.
Kim Vassalovich?
No position.
Thank you. Susan Hoffmeister Woodruff?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the District Two candidates. Shawn Nelson?
Probably.
Lenny Clavenschmitz?
It depends.
Okay. Cheryl Lewis?
Yes.
Eldon Spencer?
I'd start with education, and with that little red bag my wife has in her purse that we put groceries in.
Well, we're asking you to say yes or no.
No.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being good sports about that. I know it's very hard to answer a complex question like that, yes or no, but we appreciate your willing to try. Now, I think we'll start, we'll go to closing remarks for a minute each, and let's start with the District Two candidates for your closing remarks, starting with Shawn Nelson.
Thank you for your time, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the other candidates. I am running to be the voice of our neighborhoods and our families. Our houses, business, and infrastructure are aging. The city needs to have a focus on these issues, and we need a city council member with a passion for our neighborhoods. With focus and passion, we can attract local restaurants, innovative businesses, provide housing options for our diverse population, continue to attract families, and provide the recreation and other amenities our residents desire. Bloomington should be at the top of every list of best places to live. I know that our community is strong when our businesses are strong. I know how to budget, invest, and bring people together from diverse backgrounds with diverse opinions, and to ensure that we achieve goals and provide value for our community. I will work hard with the families and businesses in our neighborhoods. I have the experience to build our community. I hope to earn your vote for Shawn Nelson on August 8th.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Lewis.
Thank you. As I said in the beginning, Bloomington is still a work in progress, and I feel like I can help Bloomington tackle some of the big problems it's going to be looking at in the future. And I don't like to call them problems. I like to call them challenges. Providing and increasing affordable housing, renewing our aging neighborhoods, making our immigrant families feel safe and welcome. And I'm committed to doing all of those things. And just very quickly, one of the things that I believe very strongly is that there should be more women in government. And quite honestly, I can't ask other women to do it if I won't do it myself. So, that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer.
Yes, thank you. A long time ago, after having a lot of training in academic forestry and economics, I switched to law. It was my parents' business. It was a way to work actually more with people than it being an academic would have been. And I've now had taken some of my businesses to their third generation. I'm proud of that. Shawn mentioned passion, and I'm also proud being on this panel with, I think, four candidates who'd all bring a lot of passion. I'd like to think that since the council took the chance on me and appointed me, I've demonstrated that passion, and I'll continue to do so. I'll do it focused on protecting green space. I'll do it focused on putting infrastructure needs first before we do any kind of spending initiatives that I'll be very skeptical about, about new spending, and listening to and supporting neighborhood needs. Thank you, and I agree with Cheryl, we need more women in government, but most importantly, we need public officials who listen to and represent all of us, regardless of gender, regardless of race, regardless of background. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Clavenschmitz.
Thank you all for listening tonight and coming on out. I've been, I've been working to make a difference in this community my entire life. As a scouter, when I was a young child, earned the rank of Eagle Scout and did community service a lot at that point in my life. As an adult, I've been involved with the community ever since I can remember. And making a difference in the community, it's one thing to be involved, it's another thing to make a difference. Recently, I helped spearhead the craft hockey vote contest, which resulted in the city of Bloomington receiving $75,000 for ice arena improvements. It's one thing to identify the problems, it's another thing to complain about the problems. It's something else to bring solutions and do the hard work to make things better in our community, and that's what I'm committed to do on our city council. I feel our city council needs to be more representative of the community in which it serves, and thus, I want to represent the families in our community and our aging parents. Professionally, I've worked to save taxpayers hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars in my daily, my day job, and I think I can also do that in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, let's go to closing remarks by the at-large candidates, starting with Michael Arulfo.
Thank you very much for the folks that have come out to support this event, and thanks to the League for providing this great forum that we can engage the community and support the candidates who are in for local office. My name is Michael Arulfo. I said in the beginning that I believe that the mission of local government is to enrich the lives of its residents and to provide a sustainable environment that the community can flourish. To pursue these ends, I believe that we need to keep priority for a strong education system, protect the green spaces, as well as provide affordable housing. I think at this time, Bloomington is at a turning point in its development, and I'd like to be at the forefront of that development area to make sure that the city moves forward in the right manner.
Thank you very much. Kim Vassalovich.
Thank you. Bloomington is a great city. I chose to live here, so I take it very personally, and I'm committed to keeping it a great city. I've been your at-large representative for one year, and I'd really like your support to continue on that trajectory. The one Bloomington vision that you see really, to me, is the vision of our community and our future together. So, please visit, vote for Kim, or kimforbloomington.com. We want to hear from you. Thank you very much for coming out and supporting everyone tonight.
Thank you very much. Susan Hoffmeister Woodruff.
In Bloomington's mission statement, I see three major points that need to be followed. The first one is that the city is a reflection of our community's aspirations. That is not the aspirations of a few, but the aspirations of all of us. The second one says it encourages public participation. We ask our citizens for their opinions and their help. What happens? Sometimes they ignore it. The third thing it says is that they maintain and preserve our public assets. We protect our environmental resources and maintain quality public facilities. I see no wiggle worm there. I think Highland Golf Course could be run at a profit with volunteers.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, thank you all again for being here. Thank you to the League for hosting this, and thank you to my fellow candidates, who are just the nicest people. I believe that a vote is more than just expressing a preference. Your vote is an investment, an investment in the kind of future, the kind of Bloomington that you want to see. I believe that my roots in the community, coupled with a fresher, dare I say, younger perspective, my experience working with our state, city, and federal officials, and my vision and belief in tapping in the strong potential we have as a community, would allow me to hit the ground running as your next city council member. They say the first rule of politics is always ask for their vote, so I'm asking for your vote on August 8th. I would be honored to serve my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, it's time for the thank yous from me. Thank you to the candidates for participating in the forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. We appreciate that. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Bloomington for sponsoring the forum. This forum has been video-recorded and can be viewed online on the LWV Bloomington website, on the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. And it will also be rebroadcast on Bloomington Cable TV until primary election day. Thank you, audience, for attending tonight's forum. I want everyone to note that there will be a city council and school board forum in this room on Tuesday, October 3rd. Finally, please remember to vote in the primary on Tuesday, August 8th. That concludes tonight's forum. Thank you very much.[1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51][1768.51]